Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, and the time is 7:00 PM. We are here for the regular session of the Capel City Council meeting, and there is a quorum present, so I will call the meeting to order. We will be convening into work session in the first-floor conference room, so please join us. Okay, the time is 7:01 PM, and we will begin our work session. Citizens coming will not be heard during the work session, but will be heard during the regular session under citizens' appearance. So Agenda Item A, Discussion Regarding Agenda Items. Counsel, does anyone have any questions regarding the agenda items? Counsel Number Neville.
Just, I think, for the, just the sake of the public, talking about Agenda Item, on consent Agenda Item C, if you wouldn't mind, just give us a brief.
Brief? It'll be very brief. Yes, it'll be very brief. It's a very complicated matter. Basically, in this, in this case, Encore is requested, or filed a request to increase rates. And so the city of Capel participates in a sort of a consortium of cities that we hire, as a group, hire experts to review these requests and oppose them when appropriate, and do all the legal maneuvering, file all the legal cases, whatever is needed to get the city the lowest rates that would be appropriate. And so essentially, this is rejecting Encore's request that allows the attorneys that the cities hire to then pursue getting those, that request reduced to get the lower rates for customers.
All right. And so just, and to be perfectly clear for everyone, so by approving the resolution, that is denying the rate.
Encore's.
And we are going to basically look into that rate.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Just out of curiosity, is there anyone that's in the city that you know that's actually prudent? Yes?
No. No.
It's pretty universal. Just checking.
Anything else, Counsel? All right, moving on to Item B, Discussion Regarding the Interlocal Agreement with Lewisville for the Construction of an Office Warehouse Use. Ms. Mary Parambostle.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Thank you for allowing me to present this to you this evening. Here we go. I'm here before you this evening to discuss an interlocal agreement between the city of Capel and the city of Lewisville for proposed office warehouse facility. You do not have to take any action on this today. This is only to brief you on the item and answer any questions you may have. This item is proposed to go before you at an upcoming city council meeting for your consideration. So the city, the yellow line represents the city limit line, with Lewisville located north of the line, and Capel south of the yellow line. We've done a similar interlocal with Lewisville a few years back, when we did Feather Smash, which is outlined in the orange. So this is not something new, and we use that agreement as a template for this one. So the property that we're discussing tonight is actually at the southeast corner of Business 121 and Vista Ridge Mall Drive, outlined in the green. This area will give you a broad view of where the property is located. As you see, it straddles both cities. The interlocal agreement provides, is to provide clarity on responsibilities for each city, allow for coordination between the cities, and hopefully provide the customer with a more cohesive experience. The interlocal agreement will coordinate responsibilities relating to plan reviews, permitting, inspections, emergency services, water, sewer, et cetera, and memorializes this on paper, so that 10 years from now, when I'm retired, we all know this was planned and that. So again, on this zoning map, the yellow line represents the city limit line. There is currently a proposal that has an 82,350-square-foot office warehouse, shown in the green. The acreage on the Capel side is 2.6 acres, Lewisville's 3.9 acres, according to D-CAD. The Capel property is zoned light industrial, while the Lewisville property is currently zoned ag open space, so they will have to go through some type of zone change request along the Lewisville side. So this is just kind of a blow-up of the current concept plan that we've been looking at. The office warehouse building is situated in the, on the Lewisville side, with a detention basin, access fire lane easement, and truck parking stalls located in Capel. So this is a very similar situation to the Feather Smash. So access is proposed from Business 121, and there's an existing pavement or drive from Vista Ridge Mall Drive, and just off to the right. So again, the, the interlocal agreement is to provide clarity and responsibilities for each city and allow for coordination between the cities. So the items that we talk about in the interlocal regard water. So each city will provide water within its respective city limits, receive revenue from the wa, from the sale of water, impact fees, tap fees, inspection, et cetera. Lewisville will provide a domestic meter, since the building is in Lewisville. In terms of sanitary sewer, Lewisville will provide and be responsible for that. Stormwater, each city will have its own stormwater mitigation plan in place. Capel regulations for detention basins, and any other future changes would require both cities to coordinate. Again, the zoning, LI for Capel, AO for Lewisville, so that would have to be changed at some point. In terms of plans, so plat, site plan, tree mitigation, just like we did with Feather Smash, will be a single plat. It will go through review both cities at the same time. It will go through both planning and zoning commissions, and the plats finish at the planning and zoning commission level. In terms of site plan, again, it will be accepted and reviewed by both cities at the same time, so we're in constant communication with our comments. Tree survey mitigation will be conducted by each city, and they'll pay their, their fees to each respective city. In terms of permits and inspections, again, each city will provide permits and inspections, and then they'll have, all fire lanes and water will be required to be in prior to vertical construction. In terms of police and fire, Lewisville will provide the initial response. If on Capel city limits, then Lewisville shall contact Capel in assistance for reporting, investigation, and enforcement of Capel ordinances. This is the same as we have for Feather Smash. In terms of trash, city of Lewisville will provide, since the building is on Lewisville, it'll have a Lewisville address. So just to let you know, that city council may not see this project again after the interlocal is approved, if it's approved, unless there's some kind of zoning change or variance that's being requested. So it's just like any of our other projects, if it's a straight site plan, you never see it. It just stops at the planning end of it. So this is just from Denton CAD, just shows right now, you know, the proposed taxes that we get from it are about $220. So I'm sure that will change a little bit, but not significantly. So again, you don't have to take any action on this today. It's only to brief you on what I'm going to bring forward. I think it's at the next meeting. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Counsel?
Ms. Neville. This is completely out of third base, and I apologize because it is kind of random, but on the sales tax that we generated out of that structure under 3.334, would we get our proportion of their destination sales tax based upon our allocable share of the total acreage? Or because the structure resides entirely in Lewisville, they alone would get the sales tax?
Lewisville alone will get it.
Okay. Thanks so much, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Counsel Neville.
Mary, what's the rear yard setback where the truck parking is?
Um, I would be guessing. I'm thinking it's 20 feet. We haven't, like, examined in terms of all the physical ordinances, so we'll take a look at that.
It's hard to get a scale, because I don't know how big a truck parking space is. It's not 9 by 18.
No, no, stuff like that. But obviously, this is just a concept plan.
Yeah.
Once it comes in for formal review, things will move around.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Good question. What about ongoing maintenance? Is that going to be, I guess, since the building is entirely on Lewisville, like that?
What kind of maintenance are you referring to?
Whether it's improved, whether it's a, the structural, or anything that might come in the future.
Okay, so, again, like with anything, it's, it should be Lewisville, because it'd have a Lewisville address, and from all, you know, if you were just to drive by, you would not even think that it's in Capel at all. But again, if it's something that happens on, on our end, then I'm sure Lewisville will contact us and have us address that issue if it's like something to do with the detention basin, or paving, or something. So there will be an opportunity for us to have some say in things. But like I said, the, the building will be in Lewisville, so they'll handle probably the majority of any issues with that.
Okay. Counsel Neville.
The.
Right, so, unless it's something like code enforcement-driven, anything else is really private.
So the next step is just this, the ILA will just come through consent agenda next meeting, or something like that? Is that the way this, is that the next step?
Yeah.
Just making sure what the next, you said we didn't have to make a decision or not, but it'll just show up next, next time?
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Cool. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
That's it. Thank you.
The time is 7:13 PM, and we are at the end of work session, so we will move to City Council Chamber for the regular session at 7:30. What is this? Who's that there? All right, everyone, the time is 7:30 PM, and we will move into regular session. Reminder, person wishing to speak during the citizens' appearance or the public hearings must sign the appropriate register outside the city, the council chambers, and list their addresses. Tonight, Pastor Caleb Brummidge is here to give the invocation, and then we will cite the Pledge of Legions, so please rise, join us, and remain standing.
Like Mr. John said, my name is Caleb Brummidge. I'm the pastor at First Capel United Methodist Church. And while I am a Christian, I recognize that not everybody in Capel is of the same faith tradition. And so if you are not a Christian, I invite you to enter in this time and to whoever prayer you pray to. And if you are not a person of faith, I encourage you to use this time as self-reflection. So will you join me in a time of prayer? God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have provided us. We thank you for the sunshine, and though it is hot, we thank you for the energy and the life that it brings. We thank you for the noises of nature. Though we are in a city surrounded by cars and surrounded by moving parts, Lord God, we feel the wind, we hear the rustle of the bushes and the trees, and we hear the chirping of the birds, and we know that creation is continuing to create through you. God, we thank you for this evening, for the opportunity to gather as members, and as leaders, and as people who care about the surrounding Capel area, and we thank you for the voice of leadership that is provided. God, you tell us to tend to each other, to care for one another, and God, we ask that in this place you remind us of that as we have conversations surrounding your world, surrounding your people. God, we ask that your Holy Spirit fill this place, and that in that, we keep sound mind. In your name we pray. Amen.
With allegiance, we defy, in the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item is citizens' appearance. Ms. Higgins, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes.
Okay, seeing none, I will forego the reading. And then, Item Six is the consent agenda item. The consent agenda item, agenda item is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Counsel, any items you'd like to discuss or pull? Counsel Member Neville.
To directly answer your question, no, sir, I do not, but I'd like to make, move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second by Counsel Member Smith. All in favor?
Walker Nahosa-Smith, Carol Neville, John Matthew Hill, all in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. And next, Agenda Item Seven, we have City Managers' Report, Project Updates, and Future Agendas, and Directions from Work Sessions. City Manager Mike Land will provide his report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Counsel. I'm smiling because I, I'm looking forward to giving our mayor a hard time about how quickly the Mayor Pro Tem moves a meeting. All right, so let's begin with the Moore Road Boardwalk update. It's about 85% complete. The contractor completed installing all the beams and walking tread for the board, Boardwalk itself. The handrail contractor is out there now. The Duck Pond Park improvements, work continues, as the contractor has completed the outfall structure and is beginning to work on the southern pond edge stone wall. Thwait Park, work continues on installing the in-ground storm pipe for the creek to the pond. Reminder that the park is closed. South Belt Line, there was no ribbon cutting, so everybody that said there was, me, who said there may be one, there wasn't, and there won't be one for a while. South Belt Line, the contractor continues installation and median irrigation landscaping, striping continues, and lanes will begin to open tomorrow, with all lanes being open by Friday, from Dividend to Southwestern. The final phase, which is Hackberry to 635, will begin in the coming weeks and will take about four to six months, so hopefully by the end of the year. Moore Road pavement repair, Moore Road traffic control mobilization is, continues in front of the school, and will continue until school starts. This is the Sandy Lake Moore Road project that's been going on with partnership with Dallas County. The DART work at MacArthur and East Belt Line, work continues, storm drain relocations. And if y'all remember when I said probably stay away from South Belt Line, I would highly encourage you to stay away from the intersection of MacArthur and East Belt Line. I shouldn't laugh. It is, it is not good. If you live on the east side of town, all of us who live over there appreciate the The Village Parkway Pump Station Generator, the update on that is that the second feed is up and running, the primary feed is up and running, the backup generators are in place, the permanent generator now is expected to be delivered by the end of August. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I actually had to drive to O'Reilly, and it was not fun this afternoon. Okay, Item Eight, Mayor and City Council Report on Recent and Upcoming Events. First, the final budget workshop is this Thursday, July 27th, at 6:00 PM in Town Center in the second-floor conference room. Next, register to join the Capel Community Corral for a class, singing one-on-one, on July 31st at 7:00 PM at the Capel Art Center. Next, celebrate the End of Summer Reading with Games, Face Painting, Free Burgers, while supplies last at the library, August 5th, from 11:30 to 1:30 PM. Do I ask them? Do they have any? Okay. Item number nine, right? Item number nine, Council Committee Reports Concerning Items of Community Involvement With No Council Action or Deliberation permitted. A, Report on Kelton Farms Plan ISD and Lewisville ISD by Counsel Member Mark Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It's that time of year again. We'll have a little update here for CFB. The first day of school for CFB ISD is August 10th. Online enrollment is open for all new and returning students. Back-to-school resources and school supply lists can be found at cfbisd.edu. The district has a variety of teaching, coaching, paraprofessional, and administration positions open. A complete list can be found at the district website, cfbisd.edu. Professional development is underway for teachers, and the annual convocation ceremony will be held on August 4th at the Toyota Music Factory. And let's move on to Lewisville ISD. Lewisville ISD's One Vision Task Force was able to establish a bond referendum recommendation for the Board of Trustees at their, their final meeting. They will present this information to the board in August. Please give a big congratulations to Dr. Lori Rapp for being named Superintendent of the Year by the Texas PTA Association. LISD's Back-to-School Fair is set for August 5th at Lewisville High School. They're currently looking for sponsors and donations to help support the 6,000 students and their family, their families with resources for a successful 23-24 school year. Visit lisd.net/BTSF for more information. And Lewisville ISD will be welcoming their students back on Wednesday, August 9th. As a reminder, SID families now have access to the new Lewisville ISD app. The app gives you access to grades, attendance, lunch menus, bus routes, emergency notifications, and much more. Search Lewisville ISD in the App Store to download. Now is the perfect time to join your school's PTA. If you're looking for more ways to get involved, visit lisd.net/volunteer. It's almost football season again. For more information about renewing your season tickets or becoming a new season ticket holder, visit lisd.net/athletics. And businesses looking to hire LISD students can post job openings year-round at lisd.net/studentjobs. And that's all I have, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you very much. Counsel Member Hill. Item B, Report on Capel ISD. Counsel Member Brianna Henderson Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So for Capel ISD, and so apologies, Councilmember Hill, as we were chatting over here, because we're like, wow, school's starting already. Um, but for Capel, they start August fifteenth. So, um, just wanna let y'all know, school's starting soon. The other thing is with regard to Capel, I, schedule pickup is happening soon. Um, I don't have the middle schools, but I do have CHS nine. CHS nine is on Thursday, August third, from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty to three-thirty. And then for Capel High School, the seniors are Monday, July thirty-first, from nine to twelve. The juniors are on Tuesday, August first, from nine to twelve, and on Wednesday are the sophomores on August second, um, from nine to twelve. So that's the pickup. And I guess all that to say is just ask everybody to be mindful of traffic as school goes back and knowing that we've got our neighboring cities starting on the ninth and tenth, and then we've got, um, Capel on the fifteenth. And then we also have all our recently graduated seniors heading off in different directions, and so wishing them all the best.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson-Smith. Item C will be report on Capel seniors by me. The senior updates, the seniors' members have enjoyed a fun summer so far. They started with the season with a Mother's Day high tea party. Participants doned their best attire and learned about high tea etiquette while enjoying tea and petit fours. Keep Capel beautiful hosted gardening classes, and members learn how to conserve water in their garden. And in June, the members took a trip to Hamm Orchards in Terrell, where they picked peaches and enjoyed Texas barbecue for lunch. They also celebrated Father's Day in June with a hot dog lunch. July Independence Day lunch, they had, they had lunch at Heart Eight and listened to the music from Live Entertainment Dave Eagleston. The July Supper Club, they visited Giovanni's and First School for Italian dinner. The center will end the month with a monthly luncheon featuring our own Jessica Carpenter, providing updates on Community Experiences Project. The members have continued to play cornhole, they want to defend their title, I think they won last time, uh, and participate in fitness classes and meetings with new friends and social activities. August, another, will be a fun-filled month, saying goodbye to summer, and they look forward to fall. By the way, the senior center meeting is tomorrow, eleven thirty at the senior center. You're all welcome to join us. Next, D, report on Capel Art Center Foundation by Councilmember Jim Walker.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, the foundation is really doing quite well right now under the brilliant leadership of its current president, Lee Walker. Uh, they have a very active board and a lot of good things that are planned. Uh, it was recently declared DFW's best live theater venue, and they're excited to announce their third season of entertainment featuring now eighteen world-class performances. The new season will begin in September and run through the following September. It'll include family-friendly entertainment, incredible musical performances, and a wide variety of unique acts, which promise a tremendous season of entertainment for Capel citizens as well as those that come to see our, our wonderful center. Uh, upcoming events of note, August twenty-ninth, DeVos Consultancy will present their findings regarding the CACF and the resident arts companies to counsel. Uh, on February tenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Capel Arts Center Foundation will host its second annual fundraising gala at the Capel Art Center. Last year was a big success, and, uh, Hillary Gorman is currently chair of this year's gala, and, and I know she's gonna do a fantastic job. And then on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, the Arts Center Foundation will host its third annual and incredibly popular Paw Parade and Fashion Show, along with a pet adoption event. Uh, the parading and costumed canines are a huge hit with kids and adults alike, and it's a wonderful opportunity to adopt or rescue, uh, if, if you have a, a place in your home for a, to give them a forever home. So, uh, the Arts Center Foundation is doing very well, and as is our art center. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Uh, by the way, on report on Capel seniors, I know last month Councilmember Neville was there, uh, is there anything that you'd like to add on the report?
Unfortunately, we were unable to attend the luncheon due to our very fun water event that we had, which was the same day, so. So at this time, I have nothing to report, but I know that the seniors are excited to resume and their monthly luncheon this month. That is all I have to report.
You made me prolong the meeting for no reason. All right. Uh, next item number ten, public service announcement concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Uh, council, anything that you have to announce for public service announcements? All right, seeing none. Item eleven, necessary action from executive session. There being no exec- executive session, so there is no necessary action. Item twelve, you could say you've been in the entire city council meeting. There being no further business before the council, this, we are adjourned at seven forty-seven PM.